I call a 3:00 PM session of the March 26, 2024, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you, if you want to address the board and be put on the agenda specifically, you'll need to contact the county administrator's office at least seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of consideration today for board business is Agenda Item Number Five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Six, we'll have a monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinstaff. Welcome, Scott.
Good afternoon. This is a report for end of February 2024, personal property collection. We collected 93.51% of the 22 personal property. Next month is when I'll start reporting on 23 personal properties, and February 5th is our deadline. As of February 29th, we collected 84.1% of the 23 real estate taxes. During the month, we collected $227,081. And January 1st, 2024, TACS has collected $183,480. And so far in the month of March, we have 21 DMV stops collected. Also, I don't know if y'all have been notified yet, but on April 12th, we'll have our next judicial and nonjudicial sale. And I think we have probably close to forty-some parcels, twenty-seven-some parcels for sale on April 12th.
Excuse me, Mr. Grinstaff, is it going to be here inside here?
Right here.
Yeah.
Any other questions or items that... All right. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, Consideration of Proclamation Recognizing National Library Week. Dr. Kobl, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's, or proclamation for the board's consideration?
Proclamation recognizing national... Sorry. Proclamation recognizing National Library Week, whereas the Blue Ridge Regional Library offers the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life's journey. And whereas, our libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, or socioeconomic status. And whereas, the Blue Ridge Regional Library's five branches and bookmobile strive to adapt to the ever-changing needs of our communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations we serve. And whereas, our libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas, the Blue Ridge Regional Library plays a role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. And whereas, public school and other libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to educate and education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas, libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims April 7 through 13, 2024, as National Library Week. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the ventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proclamation recognized in April 7 through 13, 2024, as National Library Week in Henry County.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer, I'm going to ask Dr. Kobl and Mr. Dillard if they would, on behalf of the board, present this to the folks here representing the library.
Yes, sir.
It's a different room.
That's not it?
No, that's the room. Do you have it? Do you have it?
Otherwise, we could get a problem.
Does she need to keep this one too?
No.
No.
I will mention before we take up Agenda Item Number Eight, there is laying at the board's desk information provided by the Blue Ridge Regional Library System and the stats, and we appreciate you all providing that information to us.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yes.
Do we have a representative from the Fontaine Ruettin Club with us? Yes, okay. All right. Great. Agenda Item Number Eight, we'll have a consideration recognizing the 70th anniversary of the Fontaine Ruettin Club. Mr. Pruitt, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration?
Yes. So this is a resolution recognizing the 70th anniversary of the Fontaine Ruettin Club, whereas the Fontaine Ruettin Club has been an invaluable asset to our community for the past 70 years, embodying the essence of volunteerism and selfless service. And whereas, the Fontaine Ruettin Club operates slowly through the dedication of its volunteer members, with no member receiving compensation for their efforts, demonstrating a deep commitment to the well-being of Henry County and its residents. And whereas, the Fontaine Ruettin Club utilizes funds raised through donations and various fundraising activities to support numerous projects and initiatives aimed at enhancing the lives of our community members. And whereas, among the projects supported by the Fontaine Ruettin Club are notable endeavors such as Hunters for the Hungry, I Like Me Books, the Ray Martin Senior Fishing Rodeo, 4H Camp Scholarships, and the Fontaine Ruettin Education Scholarships, all which have had a profound and positive impact on the lives of countless individuals within Henry County. And whereas, the Fontaine Ruettin Club was chartered by the Board of Directors of the Ruettin National on March 26th of 1954, and has since remained steadfast in its commitment to the Ruettins' overarching purpose of fostering understanding among people and improving communities through volunteer service. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this 26th day of March 2024, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors hereby extends its deepest gratitude and sincere appreciation to the Fontaine Ruettin Club for 70 years of exemplary service, generosity, and dedication to the betterment of our community. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution recognizing the 70th anniversary of the Fontaine Ruettin Club.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Before I ask representatives of the board to present, how many in the room are actually members of a Ruettin Club anywhere? I knew that we had at least a few. I'm going to ask, along with Mr. Pruitt, if Ms. Buchanan and Vice Chairman Bryant would present this on behalf of the board. They are longstanding members. Last night, I received my 44-year pen for the sample Ruettin Club.
Okay. Translators.
As Mr. Wagner just said, today's date represents seven years today.
And the Fontaine Ruettin Club would love to extend an invitation to each of you to come to our celebration that we are holding at our club on April the 20th of this year. Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Nine, we'll take up Financial Matters, 9A, an additional appropriation referencing Library of Virginia Records Preservation Grants for the Circuit Court Clerk's Office. Mr. Wagner?
Circuit Court Clerk Jennifer Ashworth is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $35,226 received from three grants, and one from the Library of Virginia Circuit Court Records Preservation Grant Program. The grants will be used for the preservation of loose records, rule books, sheriff's laws, and S-3 books for multiple years between 1774 and 1823, election records from 1788 through 1825, and land tax books from 1789 through 1806. And the grants do not require a local match.
All right. With this, what action would the board like to take regarding this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $35,226 received from the Circuit Court Record Preservation Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. 9B, an award of contract referencing replacement vehicles for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner?
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to award a contract to Sheehy Ford in Richmond, Virginia for the purchase of two 2024 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles totaling $78,617. The pricing is based on the Virginia Sheriff's Association Vehicle Procurement Program and specifications, and funding for this purchase is included in the fiscal 2024 capital improvements program. And Sheriff, excuse me, Lieutenant Colonel Harrison is here.
Yeah, question.
With this, of the warning of the contract, what desire does the board have?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract to Sheehy Ford for $78,617 to purchase two 2024 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. 9C, an additional appropriation referencing grant funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner?
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $3,584 received from the Virginia State Police HEAT Grant Program. According to Sheriff Davis, the grant will provide funding to send two investigators for additional training on combating and solving auto theft crimes.
In regards to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $3,584 received from the Virginia State Police HEAT Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. 9D, an additional appropriation referencing vehicle insurance settlement funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner?
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $40,000 received from vehicle insurance settlements. Sheriff Davis advises that the funds will be used to repair existing vehicles.
Referencing this additional appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $40,000 received from vehicle insurance settlements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. 9E, an additional appropriation referencing S-E-E-D, known as the SEED Beautification Program for the Planning Zone and Inspection Department. Mr. Wagner?
Staff is requesting the board to appropriate $25,000 received from the Lester Group for sponsorship in the Strategic Economic Environmental Design, commonly known as the SEED Beautification Program. The funds will be used to maintain a SEED sponsored garden at the intersection of Ironsburg Road and US 58 bypass.
All right. With that, Mr. Dillard, I believe this falls in your district.
Yes, sir. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appropriate $25,000 from the Lester Group for sponsorship in the SEED program as required, as requested.
All right. Second. Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. 9F, an additional appropriation referencing 1% sales tax fund for new construction and renovation for the school board. Mr. Wagner?
The school board has requested an appropriation of $4,686,900 from the 1% of the sales tax fund designated for new construction and renovation of schools. The school board plans to use $144,900 for architectural engineering and consulting services for the replacement of Laurel Park Middle School roof, and $4,542,000 to complete renovations to the HVAC system at Bassett High School. And Dr. Amy Blake Lewis and Dr. Boomer, here, should you have questions?
All right. With that, on this additional appropriation and substantial background material as provided in your board packet, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appropriations of $4,686,900 from the 1% sales tax fund for new construction and renovation of schools as requested by the school board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Mr. Wagner or Daryl, either one, what is typically the amount that we add back in if sales tax figures go, and I know that things in this world are up and down some, but what pretty much do we add back to that fund on an annual basis?
Well, about $5 million.
Annual?
Annual.
Okay. Thank you. And currently, prior to this action today, there was $13,600. Thank you. That takes us to informational items. I'll begin by taking comments by the board, starting with Dr. Kobl. Mr. Pruitt?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Dillard?
Yes, sir. I just jotted down a few notes. I know we're in budget season, and I like to look at all the great things that are going on in Henry County, and, you know, mentioned this before, we have a new sheriff, new superintendent, we have some new board supervisor members, so, you know, I like to get caught up in that wave and that excitement, but also, you know, we have a great unaccounted fund balance account. We know we're about $14 million above our self-imposed guidelines. We've heard from Mr. Heath that unemployment is at a great rate in Henry County, a low rate, which means more folk are working, more people are working, more people are spending money, more people are buying things. The more you spend, the more you buy, of course, you know, we will get some of those funds back. We're getting additional funding from solar farms, and we've had several of those approved, and those are funds that we can use at our discretion. And we also have some additional funds, abatement, opioid abatement funds. We know those have to be used a certain way, but with creative budgeting, you know, those things can definitely help us as we prepare our budget, and just, you know, many other positive economic and financial indicators that show that, you know, we're doing pretty good. And I'm hoping that, you know, with those things, we will put together, or have put together, a budget that will allow our various county agencies and departments and schools and other folk that count on us to meet their goals, and that that budget will show that, you know, we're putting a budget together that will help all of Henry County have a better quality of life. And so as we roll that out, I'm hoping those are things that we take into consideration so that we can make sure that we, you know, meet the needs of our county. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Buchanan?
The only thing that I want to mention is that the, I have another Horse Pasture District Community Meeting coming up on Tuesday, April 16th, starting at 6:00 PM at the Horse Pasture Ruettin Club. And County Administrator Dale Wagner will be there, Henry County Sheriff Wayne Davis will be there, and also Lisa Hughes with BDOT. And so if you're in the Horse Pasture District and would like to find out what's going on in Horse Pasture as well as in Henry County, please turn out.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
I need to jump back. I realize that the copy I picked up did not have 9G on it, and it was laid in our desk, but I wasn't going by that. I picked up one in the back. So I do apologize, Mr. Wagner. You had, we're adding 9G that was not on your original package sent out. So please, I'll pull the printed copy, and I'm going to ask Mr. Wagner if he'll give us some background on this, please.
Thank you. I hope so. Make sure that you get back when you got to me. So thank you for that. We've been working closely with Piedmont Community Services, our counterparts in Franklin Patrick, and the city of Marshall, for a grant to the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority as part of a regional project. And the goal of the project is to expand the capacity of support to individuals undergoing emergency crises related to mental health and substance abuse, and to reduce the burden on local law enforcement agencies. The grant does not require a local map, and the funding Piedmont Community Services will manage all aspects of the project. So before we can make application to the opioid abatement authority, it has to be approved by this board. It does not impact any of the local money that is designated, already came to Henry County, or any of the money specifically designated to Henry County. This is an application to a specific pool of money that must be a regional project.
Okay. And of course, with Piedmont Community Services, it is directing something with, with an agency that we're all familiar with as well. With that background as provided by Mr. Wagner, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board approve the application to the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority for the Crisis Intervention Assessment Center Regional Project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Is there an amount?
Yes. I don't have it exactly because we're still finalizing the budget, but it's approximately $4.2 million. And let me also add to that the center will be located, tentatively is planned to be located in the city of Marshall, within 500 feet of the county line. So it would be most advantageous for the county and cities who want to transport those individuals outside of our community. So it's beneficial to be in our community as well.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Get back on track to informational items. We've had a number of folks within the county that will have a, I guess what you call, spring break next week, and most of that falls within the school system. And along with that, there's been some other benefits. Evidently, I didn't pick up on it in the news accounts, that's, as far as school board action, but was there a stipend paid to employees or proposed to be paid to the employees, Mr. Wagner or Mr. Jones, either one, or maybe Dr. Boon?
It is my understanding that the school board granted a stipend of $1,000 to all full-time employees payable at the end of March.
Is that teachers, bus drivers, custodians?
I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Yes, there was a stipend paid in the amount of $1,000. It was including all full-time employees, which are currently employed with Henry County Schools, and it was paid out of the remaining Esser funds. So it was not part of our 24 fiscal year budget. It was remaining Esser funds.
And what fund was that?
Esser funds, the total relief funds.
Okay. And then what, what does that amount to? I've seen a figure as to the number of employees, but what does that amount to in dollars?
Dr. Boon, do you have the exact number?
It is about, about $1.2 billion.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And those are funds that do expire in September, and it's kind of a use it or lose it.
All right. Thank you. With that, and a desire to at least show some recognition to our own employees, both the county employees, PSA employees, of course, that will have to be accepted by their chairman and their board, I will accept a motion that, even though it's a little bit of short notice, that we give our employees Good Friday off.
Yes, sir. I'd make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, as supervisors, will give Good Friday off to the county.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer, that's all I have. Mr. Wagner?
I have a couple reminders, if you're ready for me. Make sure you have on your calendar a budget presentation is next Tuesday, April 2nd, at 5:00 PM. But don't expect everyone else to take a Friday off. And then we also have a budget work session scheduled for Thursday, April 4th, at 5:00 PM, and both meetings will be held in the fourth floor conference room.
What was the second one? I'm sorry, the date?
It's the Tuesday, April 2nd, and Thursday, April And then race weekend is quickly approaching, so brings lots of visitors to our community. Friday, April 5th, 7:30 PM is the NASCAR Truck Series Race. Saturday, April 6th, at 7:30 PM is the NASCAR Xfinity Series Race. And Sunday, April 7th, at 3:00 PM is the NASCAR Series Races. And as you know, our public safety folks, law enforcement folks, our volunteer rescue squads have committed a lot of resources to make sure that's a safe weekend for everyone visiting our community, so we just, hats off to them, and we just welcome people to our community.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
All right.
With that, I'll accept a motion to go into closed meeting as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the board convenes in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Industrial Development Authority, Planning Commission, Henry County Department of Social Services, and the Southern Area Aging Agency on Aging, 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.23711A3 for discussion of acquisition-disposal of real estate, and 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer, I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by Mr. Bryant. Mr. Powell, will you poll the board, please?
Yes, sir. Four members of the best of your knowledge on the company business matters, law enforcement exempted from open duty and requirements of the third of the Geneva Section 2.23711, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a district appointment concerning the Industrial Development Authority for the board's consideration?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board reappoint Lynn Dillon and Steve Isley to a four-year term to the Industrial Development Authority expiring March 31st, 2028.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Uh, Ms. Bryant, I believe that you have, uh, for the Planning Commission, uh, members for the full term and, and one to, uh, fill a unexpired term.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we reappoint Paul Sittler of the Ridgeway District, Richard Reynolds of the Horse Pasture District, and Jeff Pearlman of the Reek Creek District for a term of four years ending in March 31st of 2028. And also would like to appoint, uh, Stuart Bowman to replace Fred Spencer for the remainder of his, uh, term ending in March 31st of 2025.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Uh, Mr. Pruitt, I believe that, uh, for a unexpired term on the Southern Area Agency on Aging, that you have a, an appointment for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to appoint Brenda Metz to the Southern Area on Aging Board to fill a unexpired spot, um, which would end November 1st of 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, do you have any other business for the board's consideration prior to a recess? Board members, do you have any? If not, we'll stand in recess and start promptly at 6:00 PM tonight. I'll call the 6:00 PM session of the March 26th, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess, uh, from our afternoon session. Like to welcome all of our, uh, visitors. Remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board, uh, to accomplish that. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public, uh, that, uh, we take up later in tonight's meeting, uh, on agenda item 18. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Uh, at the same time that we're in here, they're, uh, in a side room, uh, there is a public hearing, uh, that they're taking, uh, written and oral, um, information for those desiring, and they being, uh, representatives of, uh, VDOT. So, uh, if you wish to comment on that, uh, send in an adjoining room just as you step out the double doors here and to your right. And then Mrs. Hughes or David Kaiser from VDOT will be in later, uh, to take up general highway matters, uh, agenda item number 19. Agenda item 13 is being, uh, scratched from tonight. There was a scheduling, um, conflict between coaches and parents not being able to get everyone here, and it looked like as messy a night as it is out there, it's probably good, uh, um, they will, um, attempt to try to reschedule this and coordinate this with parents and teams and players, uh, at a later date. That takes us to agenda item number 14, which is a public hearing on a rezoning application, R-24-02, Patrick Henry Farms Corporation. We have with us to give us background material on this, Mr. Lee Clark, our Director of Planning and Zone. Mr. Clark?
Okay. This property is located on the southwest end of St. John Circle, just beyond the interstate maintenance in the Irishwood District. Taxent number is part of 447 lot 13. The applicant has requested rezoning of approximately 22 acres from suburban residential district to agricultural district A1, and the applicant intends to use the property for agricultural purposes. Following a public hearing, both the Planning Commission and staff had difficulty, um, with the issue of uses that could potentially take place adjoining a residential subdivision. Um, without going into a lot of detail, there's a lot of uses that can take place that the applicant may not intend to do, but at some point in the future, that property may very well or will be owned by someone else who might not have the same intentions that the current applicant does. So the end result of that is after quite a bit of discussion, the Planning Commission recommended this rezoning request be denied.
There is a, a fair amount of background material included in the board's packet along with, um, some petitions that were submitted. I will, uh, this requires a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at 6:03 to take any input on this. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:04. Mr. Dillon, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, sir. And appreciate Mr. Clark and the information which helped me to understand the decision that the Planning Commission made, and definitely somebody may want to use it now just for, you know, minor, um, agricultural, but in the future, somebody could expand that and really impact the neighbors and the housing, um, um, the property value and things of that nature. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to deny the zoning request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. That takes us into agenda item 15, public hearing for rezoning application, R-24-03, Patrick Henry Farms Corporation. Mr. Clark?
Okay. This property is lo- located on the north side of the westbound US 58 on ramp to the 22058 bypass. It's also in the Irishwood District. Taxant number is 447 lot 14. The applicant hears request for rezoning of approximately 3.8 acres from suburban residential district to commercial district B1, and the applicant intends to market this in conjunction with the adjoining commercial property which they already own for potential business purposes. Following a public hearing, both the Planning Commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:05. Is there anyone desiring to comment on this, uh, rezoning application? It's apparent that there's no indication of anyone desiring that, so I will close the public hearing at 6:05. Likewise, uh, Mr. Dillon, this is in, uh, your district.
Yes, sir. And I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item 16, a public hearing for rezoning application, R-24-04, Richard Cecil. Mr. Clark?
Okay. This property is located at 39 Enslow Drive. It's in the Blackberry District. Taxant number is 13712 lot 17. The applicant hears request to rezoning of approximately 6/10 of an acre from commercial district B1 to limited industrial district I2. The applicant intends to use the existing garage building as a beverage mixing and bottling company. Following the public hearing, both the Planning Commission and staff also recommend approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing on this at 6:06 PM. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:06. Uh, this is actually in my district, and I did go out and take a look at it. Uh, I, uh, do agree with the Planning Commission on this. If someone would make a motion on my behalf.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 17, a proposed solar facility siting agreement with Sunny Rock Solar LLC. Uh, Mr. Wagner or Mr. Lyle? Which one? Mr. Lyle?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, the Sunny Rock Solar project is a project located in, proposed to be located in the Ridgway District, uh, near the intersection of Joseph Martin Highway and Soapstone Road. Uh, the project, uh, would be about a 97-acre, um, solar panel farm. Uh, it would produce 20,000 megawatts a year, um, and it requires, as proposed, no exceptions to the county's solar ordinance. It is, um, it was issued a special use permit after a public hearing by the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, and the company has, uh, approached the county, uh, with a siting agreement that you have before you. Um, the requires, it also authorizes no exceptions. Siting agreements can authorize exceptions, but they request none from the county, and it proposes to pay the county a payment of $400,000, um, for the, uh, project if it's approved.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Um, we will open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:09 PM. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this, um, public hearing for the proposed solar facility siting agreement? Seeing one hand, I have a brief policy statement to read as you come to the podium. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. Um, by, uh, if you care to address the board, what you do, uh, come, uh, podium, state your name, uh, the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you have agreed you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation to no more than five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, my name is Sean Hirschberger. I, I am here to represent, uh, Sunny Rock, Sunny Rock Solar. Uh, I obviously do not live here in, uh, the county, but I, I'm just here to address you very briefly. I'll keep my comments brief. You guys have a presentation in front of you that we handed out, a hard copy of. So I'm just gonna try to hit some, some highlights, uh, who we are as a company, Energix Renewables. We are headquartered in Arlington, Virginia. Uh, we have over 90 employees in the Commonwealth. We have 15 operational projects, 14 of which are right here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, one's in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Uh, some of the things that, one of the things that we like to, uh, stress when we talk to public bodies is yourself, uh, one, we are the long-term owner, so we will be the part of the community for the 35-year lifespan of this project. Uh, another thing that we like to highlight is we have a very strong Buy American pledge. So everything from the panels to the racking, cabling, to the inverters, we source domestically. Essentially, everything that we can source domestically, we do source domestically. So then, a little bit about the project, yeah, I think you've got the overall summary pretty well. Um, the, some highlights on solar just in general, uh, after the brief construction period, we, you will see no traffic, no noise, uh, no pollution, no lake pollution. Uh, we're a quiet neighbor. All we do is sit behind trees and pay an increased tax load to the county. Um, and the lifespan is 35 years. Uh, over that 35 years, there'll be roughly a 35, 39, uh, 39, 39 times the, the current tax generated off that project will be generated off of it with the solar facility on site. Um, we've done extensive community outreach for this project, uh, including, uh, going door-to-door, not, you know, neighborhood outreach, uh, held a community meeting as well at, actually, two community meetings, one in October 2022 and one in January of 2023. Uh, you can see in the, in the packet, there's, you know, some examples of 100-foot, uh, the setback, 100-foot setback, and how there is vegetation that would be retained. Majority of the site will be hidden very well behind existing vegetation. Uh, anything to be supplemental, we, we've committed to, you know, supplemental tree buffer. Uh, and then in the very back, you can see some line of site analysis from the, from the closest neighborhood. And I do want to mention, I'm here with colleagues Danielle Corson and Lindsay Rotum, and we are happy to answer questions. Anything that, that you all have questions on, we are here to answer. And I want to thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on this, uh, public hearing? Anyone else? I will close the public.
Mr. Adams, I do have a question. I don't know if I need to wait till after, okay?
Let me close for just a moment. Uh, I will close the public hearing at 6:13. Now, I will take, uh,
Yes, sir.
...the questions or input.
Well, and really, a comment, and, you know, you mentioned Buy American, and that's great, and we want you to, uh, buy Henry County as well. You know, we, we have some folk here that can do a lot of the work that you guys are doing, and we ask that you really make a diligent effort, yes, sir, diligent effort to recruit our workers, recruit our, uh, fence makers, uh, folk when you rent, um, equipment, you know, really keep that money here in Henry County because that helps us as well.
You, so I went, I tried to go as quick as I could.
Yes, sir.
And you called me out on one important thing that I forgot. Uh, what, you know, we do, in the, in the larger sense, we have a Buy American pledge. In the, in the more grander sense, we do have a commitment to every place we work. We do make a priority of hiring local labor, and specifically, it's funny, you mentioned fencing. It's one of the easiest things you can source locally, but, you know, going beyond that, you know, earthwork, uh, you know, any kind of contracting, testing that needs done, we try to prioritize anything as close to the project site as we can. So, yes, yes, sir, we will make sure that.
And I guess the question for those local folk would be, how do you make that process easy for them to, I guess, become a part of your bidding process or communicate with you to make sure that as you start this project, you know, that they get in on the front end of it instead of hearing about it after you've, uh, solicited other folk?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, my name is Danielle Corson. Um, I work with Sean, and we are members of the Chamber of Commerce here. Um, so, uh, we do go through the Chamber of Commerce first to source contractors and other work. Um, so we ensure that on the very front end that we are addressing as local as possible as our first priority.
All right. Thank you. Other?
Yes, Dr. Collins?
I don't have any questions for you. Thank you. My, my, uh, conversation or direction would be to Mr. Wagner or Mr. Lyle about confirming with the, the constituents of, in, of Henry County with whom I've met and talked, that this is the follow-up to the 1% approval from the board. This is still, this acreage, George, or Mr. Lyle, is still in the 1% of the approval of the acreage. Would you just give us a more, a clarification on that and just a review of our solar ordinance, please?
So the, um, 2000, uh, in Henry County, this board adopted, uh, I believe it was last calendar year, they adopted a cap on the amount of solar panels in Henry County in, in acreage. Um, it is a 1% cap of the land mass of Henry County, which amounts to 2,445 acres. That is, um, that this board has said that's all in this county that will be allowed to be developed as solar panels. Um, that there's also, in the ordinance, there is additional density requirements that essentially says that only so many, uh, solar panels can be in a proximity of each other. So we're, so the board has put a cap on it and put a policy in place to spread it out. Under the, under that, of that 2,445 acres, there is 650 acres, um, essentially, I'll use the phrase unspoken for. Um, no one has, um, received, um, so, so there's 650 acres available. Um, the, the remainder has either been, had a special use permit issued or was constructed or approved before, um, there was a, um, constructed or approved before we had a solar ordinance, so they don't need a special use permit. Um, so there are, there are, but, so of the 1,800 acres that's spoken for, um, that's either already built, it's under construction, it's in, it's been, had a special use permit issued. And I put an asterisk next to the 1,800 because, um, when a special use permit is issued, there's a, a maximum cap on the acres that can be solar panels. Um, very typically, people ask for more than they need for obvious reasons, because you don't want to come back and find out you didn't get as much as you could or as much as you need. So when they submit a building plan, uh, a site plan, it very commonly has less acreage than they got approved for, in which case, that number could come down. So there's 1,800 acres either built in construction or has a special use permit issued, and, um, that number could go down because when they, as site plans come forward, like this project, they, they may not use the 97 acres that they suggest. I, I don't know, but they, they might not. They might. site plan might call for less when they get all the final engineering. Does that answer your question?
It does, and the, so again, clarification is that we are voting on the acreage essentially that has already been approved.
This, correct, yeah. Not, not only within the 1%, but I would say under what, the way I just explained, this is, in the 1,800, it's already spoken for because a special use permit was issued by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And again, thank you, Dr. Cobbler. I realize that some of the actions, including the, going back as far as the BZA hearing on this, go back prior to you and Mr. Pruitt joining the board, and so it's very appropriate to get clarification on that. And any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, Mr. Pruitt, this is set in your district. If there is any motion that you desire to make.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the citing agreement from Sunny Rock Solar LLC as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is six zero. Jennifer, that takes us to Agenda Item 18, Matters Presented by the Public. No one had contacted the board to be specifically on the agenda. Is there anyone desiring to address the board under Matters Presented by the Public? Anyone at all? Okay. Will someone please contact Mrs. Hughes or David Kaiser, please? While we're waiting on that, Mr. Dillon had expressed that he would like an opportunity to comment on an item, and we'll take care of that while we're waiting on Ms. Hughes and Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, sir. Of course, next week is my spring break week, but, and not bringing this up just because of that, but I know there's policy or ordinance guidelines or whatever. If you're not present, you can't vote. So I spoke with Mr. Adams and Mr. Lyle, and my question was, being that we now have virtual capabilities of being present, is there a policy that we could put in place that would allow someone who couldn't physically be here but could zoom in or team in or whatever to still have the capability of voting? And Mr. Lyle said there is that possibility. Of course, he'd have to do his research and put some type of policy in place, but would like to ask that we look into that so that if someone can't be here for one reason or another but could come in virtually and meet the guidelines that Mr. Lyle mentioned, you know, such as you'd have to state your location, would have to be a majority of the board members physically present in order to vote, and, you know, a few other things that he did mention, maybe a cap on the number of times that you could do the virtual so that you couldn't just become a virtual board member. So would like to propose that we look into that to see if that's something that we could look at moving forward.
Mr. Lyle, will you, along with county administration, look into that and bring back something for the board to review? Dr. Cobbler joins me in another meeting that we actually have this week and has been a part of the West Piedmont Planning District Commission, which adopted a policy, and it does name very specific reasons. You can't just, well, I don't want to drive over there today, and I, it's, I think one of the things is sickness, and there may be another exception with no more extensions than, I'm thinking, a couple of times a year, simply because trying to maintain the, I guess what you'd say, the overall look of a board meeting and facing the public in person. So if, Mr. Lyle, if you and Mr. Wagner, Mr. Powell, whoever is assigned to work on this will come back for something for us to at least review. Thank you for.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hughes, we're ready for you. That's Agenda Item 19, General Highway Matters.
Thank you. Well, we haven't had any members of the public attend a public hearing, but I will take the board's comments and see what we can, can do with those, and I'll bring that next month. And the only other thing I have in addition to that is, you know, the spring six-year plan hearing, the big one for the Salem District. That has been scheduled for May the 7th, and it will be at the Salem Civic Center. I believe 4:00, but I'll double check that time. And that's all I have.
Do either of you all have anything for Ms. Hughes under General Highway Matters?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Hughes. She came down and met with me and Mr. Howard Waller and another gentleman out of the Irishwood District, and, you know, it was part informational, part entertaining, part comedy, but we had a great time and just appreciate her making herself available to meet with those two gentlemen.
Thank you, and we've started work on some of those items that we can do.
Awesome. Appreciate you.
Lisa, and I've talked to you several times about this, and I forgot to mention it earlier, but the ingress or the turning lane into the administration building, is that still on your radar?
It is, it is, but it's a little ways down the line. You know, we were talking about some modifications maybe to Axton Middle School with a turn lane there, trying to address some really pressing safety needs first. But yes, it is still on our radar.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda Item Number 20, but before that, Mr. Wagner, do you have any other items that we need to consider tonight?
I do not.
Board members, do you have any other items? If not, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
Sir, move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six zero. Jennifer, everyone have a good evening and a happy Easter.